We may be a few minutes late starting the meeting. We're trying to get a Zoom link up so people who can't participate because our elevator is broken can participate remotely. I will now call this meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission to order and ask, let's see, Ken to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. It is requested that members of the public hold their comments on agenda items to when they are considered. If content is disruptive or disrespectful to commissioners, staff, or members of the public, the individual will be told to stop speaking and to sit down. Public comment is limited to three minutes. First speaker, please. Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment. We will now go to the agenda. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Will there be time for comments at the end?
Yes.
And can we know what the agenda is?
The agenda is on the table outside. And as we come to the items, I will read them into the record.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Chair, are we deleting item one on the agenda?
No, that will be read into the record.
I'll second the approval of the agenda.
We have a motion by Mark and a second by Kirk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll have a for possible action discussion to approve the draft minutes of the July 11, 2023 meeting of the Planning Commission. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Kirk.
I move we approve the minutes of the July 11, 2023 meeting of the Planning Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Kirk, second by Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, abstain since I wasn't here.
Six in favor, and Mark Nedden Rip abstaining because he was absent. We'll move to public hearings. For possible action, discussion on development application DP 23-0048 for 116 townhomes in a single phase on four existing vacant parcels in the Monte Vista subdivision and DP 23-0047, a tentative subdivision map to create building envelopes for townhomes and dedicated common areas on a total of 9.49 acres. The subject parcels are located on both sides of Monte Vista Avenue, located west of the Monte Vista Single Family Development, La Costa at Monte Vista, and approximately 730 feet north of Ironwood Drive. The subject parcels are all zone multifamily residential with a planned development PD overlay in the Nevada Northwest LLC specific plan within the Menden Community Plan area. The applicant is Keith Rubin, R.O. Anderson, Engineering. Linda. And I would like to welcome Linda Doherty to planning.
Thank you very much. Wow, that's loud. Hello.
Did you want me to talk about the continuance? Yes, it does say, I will read this as AJ's request, it says, "This item will be continued at the meeting on the date, September 12, due to a discrepancy in noticing." Linda, you may continue. You can continue.
Yes, as you've just heard, the applicant has requested to have this continued to the September 12 Planning Commission meeting, so you'll see me next month. Due to a noticing error, they didn't get the public sign up.
Are there questions from the commissioners?
This is AJ Haymes from the Douglas County DA's office for the record. I would suggest if there are individuals here who would not be able to attend the September 12 hearing, that they be given an opportunity to make public comment at this time, and then I would suggest a motion to continue it to the 12th at 1:00 p.m.
I will open the public hearing for those who are unable to make the September 12 hearing. If you'd like to make comment now, please come to the podium and write your name on the roster. Seeing no one rise, I will close the public hearing and return comment to the commissioners. Is there any comment? David?
Yeah, I just was thinking about this a little bit. Last month, we heard a report on the flooding possibilities of Buckeye Creek, and I'm wondering if this property is in that area and what should be done in the future about that. Just a comment.
This is Tom Delaire for the record to answer that Commissioner Nelson, that the floodplain is adequate out there for the construction of what's being proposed. The floodplain that we were discussing earlier is east of Windhaven, and because the subdivision discharges into the northern ditch of that subdivision, it doesn't affect these parcels.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion to continue to date certain?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to make a motion to continue this agenda item to the September 12 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Bryce, second by Mark, to continue this item to September 12. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
AJ Haymes from the DA's office, is that for, it wasn't part of the motion, but maybe just to clarify, it's for the 1:00 p.m. meeting here in this room? Just the specific time of the meeting being 1:00 p.m. and that it be here.
Should we add that to the motion?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
So a restatement of the motion and then a revote or just a restatement?
A second motion amending the prior motion.
Okay, Bryce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that this item be continued to the September 12 Planning Commission meeting at 1:00 p.m. at this location.
Second. Do we have the second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Bryce, restating his motion to September 12, 1:00 p.m., this location for this item. And we have a second by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number two for possible action, division on land division application DP 23-0128, a request for a tentative subdivision map to create 10 parcels, the smallest being 2.01 acres and the largest being 3.48 acres in size, in the SFR-2, single-family residential, two-acre minimum net parcel size zoning district in the Foothill Community Plan. The parcel is located at the northeast corner of Centerville Lane and Foothill Road. The applicant's representative is Todd Anke, RCI Incorporated, and the owner is Stefan Freyss, APN 12919-10-002-069.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Lucille Rayo, Community Development. I'm going to give a brief introduction or synopsis before turning the presentation over to the applicant's representative, Zach Wood. As you just read, the subject parcel is located on the corner of Foothill Road in Centerville Lane. Parcel is approximately 25.48 acres and is zoned SFR-2, single-family residential, two-acre minimum net, with a master plan designation of single-family estates. It's important to note that the single-family estates designation has been in the master plan since 1996. That map can be found on packet page 22. The lots range from 2.01 acres to 3.48 acres, meaning the acreage size for the zoning, as well as meaning required lot dimensions and density. Staff has reviewed the project and finds that it meets county code, as well as the Douglas County design criteria and improvement standards. Staff and the applicant have met the findings on packet page 27, and is recommending with conditions approval of land division application DP 23-0128 for Stephen Frost. At this time, I'd like to introduce the owner's representative, Zach Wood, and Zach has a PowerPoint presentation for you, and just give us a minute to get that set up for you. No, it'll come on for you. Just, you're gonna have to share this. And you could put that over there if you need to. I think you have to minimize it and then share.
While that's happening, I'd like to acknowledge the public comment we received from Greg Opinski in our packet.
Sorry about that, Madam Chair. We're ready to go now.
Chair Casey and Planning Commissioners, I'm Zach Wood with Resource Concepts. I'm a land use planner here on behalf of the applicant, Stefan Froz, for the property located at 1051 Foothill Road. So on behalf of our team, Stefan is here, Todd is here, Rachel's our lead engineer for the improvement designs, and there I am at the end of the slide. Just basic background information for the property. We have a 25.5-acre parcel there now, as you see in the description of the application. We're proposing a boundary line adjustment with the neighboring property, Dryer Foothill Ranch, which would increase the size to the ultimate subdivision size and additional .8 acres, and this would allow for the proposed subdivision of 10 new lots. It meets the zoning minimum for net with 21 acres of net subdivision and 4.2 acres dedicated for public uses. It is a single-family land use with a minimum two-acre lot size, and the proposed public improvements are approximately 200, sorry, 2,400 feet of new local streets and drainage, new water connecting to Douglas Utilities, new dry utilities connecting to NB Energy and Communications that are already in the adjacent road right-of-ways at Centerville and Foothill Road, the proposed wastewater services from individual septic systems on each lot, and Nevada Division of Environmental Protection did review applications and made recommendations for approval to the county. As I mentioned, one of the unique aspects of this application is the coordination with the neighboring property, Dryer Foothill Ranch. So as conditions that are recommended by staff and as part of a agreement between the property owners, there will be a boundary line adjustment application if the subdivision is approved, which would allow for relocation of an existing agricultural well and for public easements that would benefit both property owners per the map that is in the application. And second would be that Dryer Foothill Ranch would relocate an existing agricultural ditch that serves their land, which is to the east of the project site, bringing water from the existing agricultural well in the northeast of the subdivision, and that ditch would be relocated off of the proposed subdivision onto Dryer Foothill. I've got a hard copy of the tentative map in case there's anyone that has specific questions and would like to read it in that form at any time. Basic orientation here is we have north oriented to the right of the map as it's laid out, and Centerville Lane and the Sheridan Volunteer Fire Station is on the south border of the subdivision, Foothill Lane, sorry, Foothill Road, State Route 206 is on the western portion of the subdivision. So it's got a through local road, proposed helmetway, and an extension off of that Crystal Way, which would serve property to the east if needed through a easement. Think we're good, and there's a zoning map that follows after the tentative map here. The overall subdivision design is to have those roads aligned with existing roads, Lakeview on the west and the local road that serves Sheridan Acres to the south. So those roads were aligned as best they could to create intersections with through roads with the other local roads. I think it was mentioned that there is the existing zoning. It's just another exhibit showing that right now, the entire parcel has the two-acre minimum lot size zoning. It's bordered on the north and west by the same land use designations, and those public facilities, the fire station and Douglas Utilities well to the south are on the public facility land use designation, and finally, to the west, there's agricultural land, and that's the land that's owned by Dryer Foothill. On behalf of the applicant, we do agree with the staff report recommendation for approval and would agree to the 25 conditions of approval that were recommended, in addition to the water conveyance recommendations that were made during their meeting yesterday. So to reiterate some of the findings, we have the first finding related to the zoned uses and meeting zoning requirements. The subdivision as designed meets the lot size and depth requirements in DCC and single-family land use isn't allowed use by right in the single-family zoning district. There's also been significant preparation of drainage and conceptual drainage designs that are consistent with the improvement standards and design criteria. As I mentioned before, those subdivision intersections with Centerville Lane and Foothill Road were designed so that the intersections, as much as possible, could be aligned to meet design criteria. And the conceptual improvement designs for water and utility service has adequate public utility easements for service, and I think those are the findings A3 and A4. If you want to advance the slides, thank you, Lucille. As I mentioned, the one service that is not provided by utility is wastewater. We're proposing to have individual disposal systems for each lot, and those, based on recommendations from NDEP, are meant to be mounted denitrifying and engineered systems, so they're at a higher standard than a traditional septic system. I think we're good with the next slide. Similar with meeting adequate public facilities, there's an adequate road design and conceptual drainage that was reviewed by county engineering. Thanks, Lucille. And the remaining findings, straightforward, we're not proposing the land use be zoned as a planned development or developed as a planned development. There's a single phase, all 10 lots platted and final mapped at once with improvements in a single phase. There's taxes paid up, and the project is not inside of any county-identified archaeological areas. And I'll just conclude. If there are any questions, we'll be available from staff from the commission, and thank you for your time. Again, on behalf of the applicant, we agree with the staff recommendation and would agree to the recommended conditions of approval. Thank you.
Are there questions from the commissioners? Paul?
Mr. Wood, I did not see, and maybe it's not required, any streetlights or anything of this nature, electrification for streetlights throughout this proposal. of this nature, electrification for streetlights throughout this proposal development. And are there any required? Are there any anticipated, or will there be no extra light other than the homes as developed?
That's correct. In the improvement designs, sorry, this is Zach Wood. In the improvement designs, there's no proposed new street lighting, and I believe that's consistent with the rural local road standard and the master plan that recommends for less or no lighting in rural areas of the county.
Thank you.
That's my understanding. We want to keep dark skies.
Yeah, this is Zach Wood. We do as well, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Yes. So, Zach, my concern is drainage. Can you go back to one of those maps and show me how the water flows basically from the west off the mountain to the east, and which, where are you going to put ditches to catch the water coming off the lots and show where it dumps into?
Sure. And this is Zach Wood again. I do have a hard copy of the drainage plan. I know that we can't share that via the meeting, but if it's a better exhibit for the commission, I'd be happy to grab it at the back of the room. We'll use the tentative map for now if that's adequate. If you see Lot 8, there's a small finger of drainage that's crossing. Lot 8 is hopefully where the cursor finds.
Okay, here we go.
Yep. So, there are culverts that convey drainage from the west side of Foothill Road to the east side onto the property currently, and the topography shows that drainage crossing, you know, crossing Lot 8. So, the conveyance as part of the subdivision design is that the roadside drainage of Helmet Way would intercept the surface drainage from the west. So, there's kind of two locations for surface drainage there, Lot 8 that we just mentioned, and another culvert crossing, I think closer to the proposed intersection with Foothill and Helmet Way. So, both of those surface drainages would be intercepted, conveyed into the roadside ditches of Helmet Way on the west side of Helmet Way, then to the east side of Helmet Way, then along Crystal Way through the property, and then out to the east onto the Dryer Foothill land from that point. So, that, I'll just stop there and...
That helps, but I have a follow-up. So, if I look at your road going through the middle of the subdivision, I'm assuming that all of the upper lots, the lots to the west, must drain down towards the road, and do you have ditches and culverts in there?
Yeah. Currently, the two culverts that are within the subdivision are right at the Helmet Way and Crystal Way intersection. So, those would convey from east to west, both south of and north of the Crystal Way intersection.
Okay.
Into the roadside ditch for Crystal Way and then continuing to the east.
So, on the longer road, are there any ditches? Yeah, right where your cursor is. Are there any ditches there that pick up water from the upper lots?
Yeah, it would be a standard roadside ditch per the county improvement standard. So, it wouldn't be any specific drainage conveyance. It would be inside the roadside ditch at the edge of the traveled way.
Okay. Thank you.
Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to pick up on that a little bit because I share the same concerns as Mark, and I trust that community development will address this. But we, from what I can tell, we've got about 130-foot drop. If you look at the topo from 4,800 all the way down to 47, or 30-foot drop to 4,770. So, it's pretty significant, and it sounds, when you say ditch, I'm assuming you mean that it's going to drain into the street and that it's going to be, that there's going to be some sort of L-curb or something there, and it's going to catch it and it's going to drain down towards Centerville? Or is there's going to actually be some sort of storm drain system contained within there that's going to catch this flow, which is going to be pretty significant? And then the same thing's going to occur on Cristel? I guess I just share the concern about where this water's going to shed and where it's going to go. Is it going to just dump onto Dryer Foothill Ranch, or is it going to go onto Centerville? And I may be getting a little outside of our purview here, but it just seems like that's a little bit of a concern, given the topography.
Yeah, and I'll answer. This is Zach Wood for the commissioners or chair. If the handout, the big exhibits would help, we are looking at the tentative map, so the improvement designs have that. They're in the record as submitted with the application, but for the meeting purposes and illustrating it here, I'd be happy to do that. I'll do my best here right now.
Yes, why don't you get the handout for us, please?
Thank you, Chair. This is Zach Wood. The handout that I just provided to the commission at the dais is an improvement plan set, so it's slightly different than the tentative map. And I'll just try to explain what the commission may be looking at. So, it does show a finished grade compared to the tentative map that we have on display, which is the existing topography, and that finished grade is meant to pick up basically all of the drainage north of Lot 8 and convey it to the north to Crystal Way. So, for existing sheet flow and drainage to the south of Lot 8, that would flow towards roadside ditches on Centerville naturally, and we're not proposing any changes to that drainage, other than there would still be roadside drainage on the very southerly portion that's curving of Helmet Way that would eventually convey to the roadside ditches on Centerville Lane. So, as we go north, hopefully, the exhibit showed the location of those culverts at Crystal Way and that conceptual drainage plan right now, which is north of Lot 8, conveyance is intercepted at Helmet Way on the easterly roadside, westerly roadside ditch, and from there, it's within the new improvements and conveyed to the east of the property. And I hope that having the exhibit was at least answering those questions.
Zach?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Bryce. The Water Conveyance Committee yesterday, did they talk about the maintenance of the ditches on Centerville downstream and flooding on Centerville and also water quality at all? Did they have any concerns with that?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Casey. This is Zach Wood. We discussed the existing head ditch that serves the pasture to the east of the proposed property. Actually, on the tentative map exhibit, you can see it kind of crosses through the easterly section of the proposed project and irrigates land to the east. So, the proposed realignment of ditches related to this project would push that ditch to the east onto Dryer Foothill land, so it would continue to irrigate those lands. That ditch runs from the northeast corner of the property, proposed project approximately, and it runs southerly back towards, sorry, Centerville Lane. There really isn't that much conveyance left in that ditch. It's minor, so eventually, the conveyance of stormwater from the proposed project off the easterly would be intercepted by that one minor ditch on the Foothill Road property. And there was discussion about that detail. We didn't talk about any necessary improvements or design changes that would need to happen for that ditch to continue serving the land to the east, and then it tailwaters towards Centerville Lane.
Thank you, Madam Chair. AJ Hames from the Douglas County DA's office. Just for the record, given the nature of the exhibit, it's a very large exhibit, but I think the way it was held by the commission, I don't know if the public was able to see it. So, I was going to ask if you would perhaps ask Zach to demonstrate it in a way that the public would be able to view it similar to how the commission is.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. This is Zach Wood. I'd be happy to do that, and I have some stand-up boards, so I can leave it to the side if anyone needs to look at it in detail. So, I'll, if, now's a good time, I'll just point out where those culverts were located in my comments, so thank you. I know this may be tough to see, but we'll kind of orient it like we've got the exhibit up here. We talked about Lot 8, which is this location. So, from Lot 8 over to Crystal Way, roadside drainage would intercept these minor drainages here and here and convey to the north into a culvert, onto the Crystal Way right-of-way, and then to the east through the property and onto the property to the east. And then I mentioned the realigned ditch right now is currently here on the property and is serving the irrigation to the east. That ditch would be realigned from the well 15 feet approximately to the north, and then this realignment would move the ditch further east so that there wouldn't be any irrigation or agricultural uses on the proposed subdivision. It would all be on the property to the west for that boundary line adjustment. And then finally, drainage that's south of Lot 8 is conveyed southerly towards Centerville Lane in the roadside ditch on Helmet Way there. So, I'll be happy to stand this up, just in case anyone else wants to get a closer look.
Thank you. Other questions? David?
Yeah, a lot of times it's necessary, but septic systems, I'm not really fond of adding any more of those to the valley, but sometimes they are necessary. Do we know how far the closest sewer line is to this property?
Yes, this is Zach Wood, and in answer to that question, approximately, I think the nearest available sewer service is 2.5 or 3 miles away at the Gardnerville Ranches Improvement District. So, it's well beyond the minimum required, 300 feet to connect.
Just trying to think in my head how long it might be before sewer lines might get out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Lucille, I have one question for you and then one question and comment that maybe AJ needs to address, but we've talked about the water, and I think that's an important issue. Did this get approved yesterday by the Water Conveyance Committee?
For the record, Lucille, radio, community development, yes, this was approved at the Water Conveyance meeting yesterday.
Okay. And was it a recorded vote, or were there any objections?
No objections.
Okay. And were there any additional conditions imposed on the project by the Water Conveyance Committee?
I think there were these conditions that were added or part of the staff report in terms of any conditions that were added to the water conveyance, at water conveyance would be met.
Thank you. I do have a slight concern that, obviously, the timing of the Water Conveyance Committee in our meetings usually is about a week or more apart, and just, I think it was a difficult situation for me, not having their information readily available to us. I tried to look at the video, but I guess the video is not either available or their meetings are not taped, but I do appreciate your concerns. You were at that meeting, or the engineering staff was at that meeting?
Natalia Morelli from Engineering sat in for that meeting, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate those explanations. I do want to add one other thing on the noticing requirement. On page 36 of the packet, you do have the noticing boundaries, and I've discussed this with the District Attorney's Office previously, but Title 20, I think, is somewhat deficient in noticing. It's very good on the basic noticing that the mailed information gets sent out to all the affected residences, but Title 20, Section 20.20.011 is the public noticing sign. I drove by the location this morning before the meeting, and the noticing sign is there. It is on Centerville rather than on Foothill, which I guess I have a minor little quibble with, but it is awful small, and I hope that when the Planning Commission does take up Title 20, I know Tom has probably got this on his agenda, that we do strengthen the noticing requirement, so this noticing sign would be maybe larger or in multiple locations so that the public would be adequately informed about projects of this nature. But AJ, if you have any comments, I'd appreciate them now. If not, I'm satisfied that this does meet the requirements currently in Title 20 as far as noticing goes.
This is AJ Hames from the DA's office. As far as I know as well, it does meet the requirements of the code, so I don't see any legal issue there. I will say that at the, just to provide some clarity, at the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee meeting, they did approve this with two conditions. The first was the relocation of existing irrigation infrastructure from the FRAS parcel to Dryer properties, and that shall occur prior to recordation of the final map. And the boundary line adjustment between properties owned by FRAS and Dryer shall be recorded prior to recordation of final map to ensure irrigation improvements necessary for Dryer are located on the property owned by Dryer. Those were the only two conditions.
Thank you very much, AJ. I appreciate your clarification on those two points.
Anything else? David?
Yeah, just, this is a personal thing, but on financial impact, it seems like anytime we're adding homes, you only talk about income from those homes. What's bringing this to my attention is the VOCC is recently talking about funding a $57 million bond to increase more public facilities. So, and that's because we're adding population, so I think something about population addition and costing should be included in the financial impact.
Thank you. Anything else? Then I will open this for public hearing. Thank you, Zach. And first speaker, please come to the podium, write your name on the roster. You will have three minutes. Please give your name for the record as well.
My name is Claire Coper. I live at 1049 Lakeside Drive. I'm also on the Board of Directors of the Homeowners Association for the Sierra Ranch Estates. My first question is with regard to the Helmet Street, that is a complete pass-through from Centerville onto entering and exiting onto Foothill. My first question is regards to the fact that almost all the subdivisions within a five-mile radius have one entrance and exit, with the exception of ours. Why does this small subdivision have two entrance and exits?
Staff is taking notes. There's no back and forth in public comment.
Okay. So, I, is there a way in which we'll receive an answer?
When public comment is finished.
Thank you. So, if there's a new Douglas County law that requires this, I would then ask if the entrance and exit on Foothill be offset, because in the drawing, it is currently directly across the street from the entrance to Lakeside Drive, which we believe, as residents, will create more hazards for traffic incidences, as well as the, all the other entrances and exits that I've noticed on Foothill and Centerville are all offset. The entrance off of Centerville is slightly offset from that which goes into Sheridan Acres. So, keeping that in mind, I understand there's a legal restriction for a distance from the intersection, but there appears to be, based on the site map, plenty of room to move the Foothill entrance and exit further south than is currently drawn. Also, with regard to the water issues, we would like to know how much the municipal well cone of the depression will grow due to the addition of these new homes. Another question is, will the developer be creating this into a CIC, a homeowners association with architectural structural restrictions that will eliminate the possibility of the... current planned lots to be subdivided and additional homes to be built? Because that will create more pressure on the use of public services and costs to the Another question is about community mailboxes, and if they're going to have a community mailbox, where will that be put?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Tom Bartels. I live at 1030 Foothill Road, which will be directly across the street from Lot 9 in the proposed subdivision, and also in the Sierra Ranchos Estates that Claire had just mentioned that is centered across the street. All of the 29 properties in that subdivision have wells and septic tanks. My question is, how far can some of these standing or above-ground septic systems be to individual wells? Because potentially, some of the septics could be as close as 50 feet to my well. Also, Claire mentioned the fact that the water will probably come from the county well at the corner of Centerville and Foothill, and the need to have an impact statement or test done from those wells on the additional demand that's going to be created there, which that well is also within 100 yards of my well. And I think, right now, it serves not only Sheridan but also Jobbs Peak. Those are my main concerns, and if there's any response that we can get on how what the setbacks are supposed to be for septic systems and what the impact is going to be on the wells and the subsequent wells in the vicinity of the one being used. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Heather Crawford, and I live at 325 Reflection Court, which is also across from this proposed development. We do have a couple more questions, which is, will the developer be selling lots and then built to the lot owner's specifications, or will they be sold with already designed home plans? And I would like to follow up with the question, will there be an HOA? Are there going to be community standards on these lots, or does everybody just get to choose what the exterior of their home is going to look like? We are, of course, trying to preserve our neighborhood as well for aesthetics, and we are curious, what is their source of fuel, natural gas or propane? And it doesn't appear on any of the maps that we have seen that there's going to be any water features. Part of the Sierra Ranchos Estates, we do have ponds, so we are curious if there are any ponds proposed in the subdevelopment. That's all.
Thank you.
I'm Deborah Hamm. I live at 1050 Lakeside Drive. One of my questions is, my husband and I bought built a workshop on our property after we bought the home, and we had to go through getting plans that looked similar to the existing structure and had to jump hoops in relationship to getting a driveway to go to the workshop, and we were never granted access from Foothill. So I found it surprising that one of the entrances into this new neighborhood is off of Foothill. And then we had to kind of jump hoops to get an easement, to actually get a little run-through on Lakeside Drive in order to access our workshop. So that was just a question that I had. As far as development, I think if we're wise and understanding, I certainly promote a private owner selling their property to someone else to develop that property. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Sign in here.
Hello, I'm Jim Parsons. I'm the Architectural Landscape Committee Chairman for Jobbs Peak Ranch. One of the things I noticed from this map is I don't see any outlines for a building envelope for each individual parcel as to where the homes are going to be located and how far they're going to be spaced apart. That's one. Two, on the septic systems, are these going to be denitrification systems? I didn't see a call out for that. And that's about it. My only two questions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment, bring it back to Lucille.
Okay, I'll take a shot at some of these. We'll have Zach come up for a few of them, and maybe Barbara, and maybe even Tom, and maybe even AJ.
Maybe have Zach come up first. And cover everything he can, and then Barbara for the...
Barbara Resnick for the record. I would like to defer to the applicant first to let them cover everything they can, and then items that they can't address, staff will cover.
Great, thank you.
I'll probably need yours, too. Thank you, Chair and Commission. This is Zach Wood. I'll try to go through some questions and give the best answers I can. So in terms of the distance from the septic, I hope we could refer to staff that probably has those NRS and local standards closer on hand. I think that well and septic separation is a minimum of 100 feet, or it could be 200 feet.
It's Tom Delair. Tom Delair, Community Development Director for the record. If he's gonna start with that one, it is 100 feet is per NAC 444.
Next, I'll start at the top. So the alignment question, that was from Claire. So as part of our application, we made a pre-application with the conceptual design and did get comments back from Douglas County Engineering on the location of the proposed intersections with Helmet Way, both for Centerville and Foothill. They are consistent with county standards, and that's a reason for that design choice. We're not proposing, at least in part of the subdivision application, as a project description to either have Maintenance District or Homeowners Association. We understand that with the county code, public improvements are either going to be the maintenance responsibility for the property owner or for an HOA. That's to be determined. Regarding a mailbox, I know that the condition is that the applicant, we will contact the postal service on the need for a box, and we'll be happy to do that. There's adequate space to include a pullout facility for a new communal box on the roads if necessary. There was a question about impacts to the existing municipal wells. As part of our application, we did not submit any data or information regarding well yields or pump testing for the municipal wells that are adjacent to the project, and we did receive an intent to serve from the utility provider, Douglas County Utilities. Source of fuel, so there per our site planning and surveying, there's no existing natural gas service out there, so if there is heat source for future dwellings, that would likely be propane. The standard for the individual septic disposal systems is to be denitrifying designs mounted above the native grade and engineered per the project description. Should have a note that none of us can read there on the tentative map references with that. So those are the three main features of those septic systems. And water features, we're not proposing any cascading water features, any fountains, and there are no ponds as part of the subdivision improvements, although to manage individual development, storm drainage for the individual lots, there may have to be retention for building pads and building development on each individual lot, to be determined. That's what I got, and in case there's something else from staff, I'll stand by or let me know if there's something else on the list.
There was a question about building envelopes. That's to be determined.
Yes, this is Zach Wood. Thank you, Chair. There are no building envelopes proposed as part of the tentative map, so the controlling yard setbacks of Douglas County Code would control where improvements were placed. I think the major setback provision of the tentative map is the 200-foot exclusion area around the municipal well that's on Lot 6. So that would not allow Lot 6 to develop the onsite septic system within that 200 feet, and there's still an acre-plus of land on Lot 6. So that's the one exclusion that's part of the map currently. Yeah, and reference to Condition Number 7.
Tom Delair for the record. The building setbacks on this zoned on the two-acre zone property is 30 feet in the front and the rear, and 20 foot on the sides. That's what they'll have to build to. Typically, when you build a house, you'll put the put the house located higher in elevation than the septics. So those septic systems, I would anticipate being between the new road that's being built and the home that would be constructed towards Foothill Road, and the septic would be in your front yard in that case. The groundwater must be an issue, and the site is the reason for the mounding, the mound-type systems, which is a sand mound that you will build, that these guys will have to build onsite, and that has to be level. So it'll be on the hillside. It looks fairly steeple along there, and and it'll be tapered down, and it'll be an amenity or some sort of feature in their front yard.
With with adding on to that, Condition 7 talks about the requirement for the septics, the 200-foot distance from the well, and then the reason for the mounted systems is high groundwater as well as density. So that's 7D, if you want to take a look at that in regards to that. As far as the way it was designed with, someone was asking why there's two entrances or two entrances and exits, the way they designed it. County Code requires that roads align for safety. It's not an unsafe matter. It's more it's more for safety that roads are aligned across the street from each other. Let's see, what else do we have? We have no idea what the owner is proposing to do with the property. We're just here to discuss the land division, so we have no idea what the owner is, you know, proposing to do, selling lots, or if he's a developer. We don't have any knowledge of that. With regards to, Deborah had an issue with her workshop. I believe that's an Endot right-of-way, so it would be up to Endot if she could receive another driveway, which typically they do not grant if the access to your property was off of Lakeside. I hope that answered her question.
But Lucille, the End... Tom Delair for the record. Endot does not allow for the private accesses off of Foothill Road, so so you have to access off of the new road that's going to be built. I think that was Deborah's question. So so that's the that's the issue there. They'll have the same stipulation on these homes. There will be no RV access on to the properties or from Centerville.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. This is Zach Wood. I missed the easiest question of all, which is, on behalf of the applicant, the proposed development program is to sell individual lots. There won't be a program development of the individual lots by the applicant. The program is to sell individual lots for those owners to develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just as a point of clarification, Lucille, we're here today, and it's within our purview to discuss a land division application within an area that's already zoned SFR 2, and so the applicant currently is it's zoned for that type of of land division. With respect to any type of architectural standards and and features of the homes, those will be reviewed by Community Development at a later date in accordance with Douglas County Standards, correct?
For the record, Lucille Rayo, that is correct. We're here today to discuss the land division map. We're not here to discuss architectural features. If there are going to be custom homes, the homes would come to the Building Department. The developer or builder would come or contractor would come to the Building Department. They present their plans. We would review them against county code, and that's about as far as it would go, unless there was a developer that wanted to do master plans, and again, it would have to meet county code.
Thank you. Any more questions from the Commission? Seeing none, I think it's time for a motion. You can find the motion on page 18 of our packet.
I'll make the motion. I move to approve, to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that they approve land division application DP 23-0128, a request for a tentative subdivision map to create 10 lots for use as single-family residential dwellings, based on the ability to make the findings as outlined in the staff report presentation, public comments, subject to the conditions that staff has put in their report, and subject to the conditions that the Water Conveyance Advisory Board.
Is there a second?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mark and a second by Bryce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll take five to allow people to leave. We'll be back at 2:06.
We'll be back at 2:06.
We have extended it by mutual written agreement for another five years. We are also in the process of possibly amending that and strengthening that agreement since it has been so successfully operating on behalf of the residents of Douglas County. Douglas County Parks Department Division provides the building and grounds maintenance and provides oversight on that facility. They do about fifteen to twenty events per year. The maximum number typically is one hundred and twenty-five, but they range between fifty and one hundred and twenty-five events. And they are to provide programming, tours, fundraising for the Friends of the Dangburg Home Ranch, and events for our community. It serves as a great reminder of the days that were once a long time ago in Douglas County, a piece of our culture, a piece of our history, that if we do not take care of it, we will forget it. And so it has been a priority in starting to do some maintenance and restoration work out there on behalf of Douglas County. And we are really, really pleased to have this facility within our park system. And we are graciously requesting that we have a zone change. So I want to thank you for your time today, and I am available for any questions you may have.
None? Mark?
So Scott, why are you looking to go to public facilities instead of staying A-19 and just doing a special use permit that allows weddings and events and stuff like that?
In consultation with your staff, we think the best approach is to be consistent with our current program, all the parks in our park system, that we do operate as a public park, all have a public facility zone. And we just think it's just a consistent way, and just, I guess, a more consistent way to have all of our properties zoned consistently. Either way, I think we are committed to any improvements that would require for the public to use that facility. We are coordinating with our neighbor who is working on a special use permit to make improvements to eighty-eight for the benefit of our residents and guests.
So do you have plans to build restrooms and cooking facilities and stuff to enhance the events?
Yes, Scott Morgan, Community Services and Manager's Office, we do. There have been discussions about some type of interpretive center. And again, of course, those would be come through a strategic planning improvement session. We do have right now immediate plans to maintain fencing. Our current concern is to protect the existing structures on site. That's where our assets are going right now, to make sure that we can stabilize those and preserve those. And then future enhancements, such as a visitor's center with flush toilets and better sanitation facilities, could be in the future based on public comment and need. If I were King, we probably already have them, but we go through a very competitive public process for all of our capital needs through our Park and Recreation Advisory Board, which has allocated funding in the last three years for improvements out there. But the public weighs in. And I got to tell you, the last couple of years, pickleball has received a lot of our attention. And so there will be a coming, a time, we hope, where the community comes and says, you know, visitors to center with flush toilets and sanitation facilities is a priority at that facility. So I'd like to say yes, but I, and if I do, I don't know what timing it would hold in store. But we are committed to making improvements at that facility.
Okay, I have one final question for staff. So should they decide to put in the restrooms and the cultural center? That would not be allowed on A-19, but would be allowed in public facilities? And it's in the floodplain?
I'm sorry?
And the project, is the project in the floodplain?
I believe it's in both. In my staff report, I think it's in A, it is in shaded X, and a minimum, very minimum portion is in AO. So that is considered floodplain. Of course, any type of structure that would be built would have to come through the planning department for design review to have engineering, planning, everybody review in order for any of that to happen, even if it's restrooms.
Okay, thank you.
And I do also want to point out Kate Morales O'Neil, for the record, Community Development Planning Division. Events is something that is not well addressed in our code, and that is something that I am bringing to the table during our update. For instance, weddings is really only referenced in bed and breakfast and a special occasion home, which is owner occupied. If you look in other communities, like a banquet facility, which is real common, something that, you know, can be utilized for different events. We've had interest in our department and questions about type, those type of facilities, and we just simply don't address it very well. But it's something that I think in our update we will be addressing events, so it's a lot more clear when someone wants to do an event and where, that it's real clear in the code and dictates what we can and can't do regarding events, because there are events that weren't around twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago.
David?
Dave Nelson. This just happened to pop into my head. Is there any liability difference from the, for the county if it's A-19 versus public facility? Changing this zoning, would it cause any increase in liability?
This is AJ Haynes from the DA's office, not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of, okay. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Paul?
Thanks. Comment first. Thanks very much. I'm the one who raised the issue of increased or intensified use, potential getting it out of agricultural into a public facility. And the information that you provided satisfies me with respect to all of the various potential uses, including, as Mark mentioned, with respect to an interpretive center and something of this nature that would be allowed once it becomes a public facility instead of facilities, instead of agricultural. So I was very satisfied, and I also thank you very much for that information, which satisfied all of my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. We have Mark Jensen here. And he is the lifeblood of the Dangburg Ranch. I'd like him to come up and address some of the questions with regards to restrooms when they have events out there, and how they handle large events out there to put Mark's questions to rest and...
Hi, I'm Mark Jensen. I'm the director, Executive Director of the Friends of Dangburg Home Ranch. And I'm sorry, what questions would you let me address?
Well, when you have events, like kite flying or the fundraisers, how do you handle restrooms?
There are two portable facilities there year-round that are provided by the county. They're on a concrete pad, kept very clean by a weekly servicing by an independent contractor that the county takes care of. During the season, during the summer, the county arranges for two additional standard units to come out there. And our, our goal for events is one hundred and twenty-five people or so and no more. And that's more than adequate for that number of people, and even if they were all drinking, which they're not.
This year, we had a lot of water. Was there any flooding out on the ranch?
No, there was no flooding, lots of snow. The roofs all held up, because of course they were replaced, I guess, about a ten decade, a decade ago, not ten decades, a decade ago, by the state. Pools of water, but nothing, nothing that caused any damage.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jensen? Ken?
Yes, I have a question for Mark. The road that...
Ken, could you please pull your microphone down?
The road that we, that services the Dangburg Ranch, is that going to be improved?
The, my understanding about the road is that it's an easement across Park Cattle's land, and the care and maintenance of the road is responsibility of the county. That's my understanding. I don't take that as gospel. And so we always defer to the county on those matters, and so that they can work through any details with Park Cattle, the landowner. Our organization doesn't have any hopes for improving that road. But again, we defer to the county's plans on that kind of question.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Jensen? Paul?
In the special use permit for purposes of weddings, et cetera, that currently exists, is there a limitation on the number of participants that could be at any single event?
I don't think it's stated in the agreement. The message from the county, we've always been told by the various county park supervisors over the years, that the county's limit was two hundred people at any particular event. Our organization has reduced that for our own purposes to the one hundred and twenty-five people, because we find that two hundred people, it's just too hard on the facility. It doesn't have the water resources. It's just not built for that kind of a crowd. We tried for the big events and learned they just didn't work.
So the, you would not need a special use permit, as we've been discussing, once the change, or if the change is granted?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that?
Sure. You would not need a special use permit for weddings and things of this nature if the change is granted by this body or recommended by this body to a public facility?
I don't know if that change would impact anything. I'm not learned enough about what our agreement, what, how, what changes this impact of zoning would make on that agreement. I just know the terms of the agreement allows us to use the park to raise money to support our organization, including fundraising for restoration purposes, and that includes rentals. And then all of those rentals have, we have to submit a permit to the County Parks Department, as you would have to at any other park. So we have the agreement, but then for each individual event, we also have to submit an additional permit, and that includes weddings and other rentals. Our organization is not a wedding business, and we've only ever done, it helped pay the bills. And now that we're more successful, we are decreasing the emphasis on rentals. There, it's available for rental, but we don't promote it.
I apologize. I just noticed that there was a wedding today, because I saw the sign up when I went by. That's why I used that.
Actually, that was a wedding at Park Cattle's.
Oh, okay.
The neighbors.
Wedding entrance.
And actually, they just left the sign out. There's no wedding there today.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
There are no other comments from the commission? Bryce?
Madam Chair, I don't have a comment. I'm prepared to make a motion if that's acceptable.
Public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I will open this public hearing, ask the public to come forward. Seeing no one rise, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Bryce, you have a motion.
I apologize for my antiness. I propose recommending approval of development application, DP 23-0095, a zoning map amendment to the Board of County Commissioners, changing the zoning of five-point-five acres at fourteen-fifty Highway eighty-eight, Menne, Nevada, eight-nine-four-two-three, from A-19, agricultural nineteen-acre to PF, public facilities.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Paul. Motion by Bryce, second by Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Goodbye, Scott. Next item. For possible action, zoning text amendment to Douglas County Code, DCC Title 20, updating Chapter twenty-point-five-zero, floodplain management and Title 20, Appendix A definitions and other properly related matters. Tom Delair, Director of Community Development, and Courtney Walker, Stormwater Program Manager, presenting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Delair, Community Development Director. And I also have here Courtney Walker, our Stormwater Program Manager from Public Works. She has been working on this floodplain ordinance since before I even started here at the county, which has been now four years. And actually, when it came to you guys, I think in 2020, I want to say, was the last time you guys saw it, we pulled this, pulled these improvements or revisions back quite a bit, because she's currently going through an audit at this time for our CRS credits, which is the sort of, it's a community rating system that is, that applies to Douglas County. And currently, because of all of the additional requirements in code, we get a twenty percent discount on our flood insurance in Douglas County. So it's, we get that because of her efforts on navigating these audits. So I don't know if she wants to go into more detail on the audit, but we have provided in the packet two things. I just want to point out before we get into these revisions, that in the back of the packet on page eighty-five, or eighty-six, starts on page eighty-six, there's a Region Nine Minimum Land Management Criteria. Received a copy of this some time ago, a few months ago now, and you will notice that the checkmarks in the, in the side, the only part that I have added is the notes in the red on that form. And there are a few things that our code was lacking. And in her efforts, in Courtney's efforts of going through the county code, trying to get this updated, we've identified a number of changes in our county code that needs to happen. And these definitions were one, we were missing historic structure, valuation, and start of construction. Now, the definitions that we have provided in the code is, comes from the State of Nevada's little excerpt that they have for a model code for the State of Nevada. Some of the definitions are a little long-winded and confusing, but we included them because of the requirement. So with that, I don't, do you want to add any more?
Good afternoon, Courtney Walker, for the record. We have a timeframe to update this particular section of code, because there, it was brought to my attention a few months ago, that in order to continue to participate in the community rating system, we had to make just a really small, minor change to the manufactured homes qualifications, regulations, if you will, as far as how, how to stay in compliance with the CRS program. And essentially, it has to do with manufactured homes and making sure that they're elevated one foot above the base flood elevation, which is a standard for construction for every different type of construction that we have. But our code had an or instead of an and. It was something that's really minor, but it's a really big deal, apparently, to FEMA, just in case you're not quite meeting that one foot base flood elevation. So that was a really minor change. And so that's really the main reason to bring this to you today, is if we don't get that change made, then we do not get to participate in the CRS program, meaning everyone would lose their twenty percent discount on their flood insurance immediately. And we've been participating in this program for almost two decades now, so that would be a pretty, pretty major issue to our residents. There was just a few other clarification items that Tom mentioned that were in this checklist. And then just clarifying a few things, over the years, as we've gotten different applications, there's language in the code that was just not clear in regards to the X-shaded floodplain, which is not the FEMA regulatory floodplain, it's the five-hundred-year floodplain. And just clarifying language there, because every engineer that comes in with a project ended up being confused on what the requirement was. And so we were almost, the way that you could interpret it was that it would be more restrictive than the primary floodplain, which is not really something that we want to intend to do. So it's just cleaning up a few of these items. It's not making any major changes, as has been tried in the past, but we have been reaching out to various members of the community to get their opinions on it as well. But the main one is that manufactured home language, and that is on page eighty-one of the packet, and it's under two A. And so you'll see that it's essentially crossing out the or and adding the and. And so we have to get this through the Board of County Commissioners as well. Our preliminary audit is on Thursday with the FEMA representative that's coming from Las Vegas. And so he's assured me that once we're going through the public hearing process, that we should remain in standing with the CRS. And I'm not sure if you want to add anything else, Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Courtney. We have reached out to the engineering field, the professional, professionals in the area. We've received three sets of comments back, a lot of fixes in the portions that were not modifying. So in the existing code today, there's a lot of spelling issues and some grammar. So we, we, I don't, we meet with AJ and go over those new revisions, so that might be a simple change in the future. Going to the board, I got to get that item done this week in order to get it posted for next week's meeting. So, so we are trying to go through and, and capture their comments. They didn't have a whole lot of comments on the newer stuff that we have provided. I think there was one set that had some, some comments, and we'll review that with AJ. And, and, and we'll go from there. But right now, this is, this is the best document we have to present to you.
Thank you. It's funny, when I read it, I didn't read it for grammar. I read it for content. And when I got to page sixty-nine, looking under oh-four-oh on F and G, the new parts that you added, I knew AJ hadn't have written this. It's, it's, there's such AJ. It's your language. It's perfect. But I, I thought it was great.
AJ Haynes, for the record, I appreciate all compliments all the time, but I don't know if I can even take credit for those, so.
Yeah, well, it looked like your language.
Just shout compliments freely, but I think I have to not take credit for them.
I liked it. I really liked it. And I liked the addition of the historic structures at the end. And there was only one thing that caught my eye that made me question on eighty-eight. And I showed this to AJ under sixty-point-three-A, number eighteen in the numbers column, the last column. It has twenty-point-five-zero-point-one-six-zero, parentheses, three, with a question mark. And underneath it has twenty-point-five-zero-point-one-seven-zero-point-one in red.
So this, this form is what the staff used. I think this is out of Region Nine, is that correct? Region Nine's form, so when they were reviewing county code to be compliant with, with the CRS program, I think it's related to the CRS program. It might be just any program for participating in it, in, in the CRS program. But they have made notes, so the black, the black text was on their form already. The red text was mine. I didn't see the reference in that particular one that you brought up, the number eighteen. I didn't see that reference in twenty-fifty-one-sixty-three in parentheses. I didn't see the answer to that reflecting there. So I directed them to a different section of code that I think answers that particular piece more specifically. So these are required provisions for all ordinances, and that's the table that you see. So they're just going through, their staff's going through and making sure we have these provisions in our code. The State of Nevada has a, a model code that meets these provisions that we can use, but Douglas County has modified even those provisions to come up with the current code that we have. We didn't want to rewrite the entire code. We need the audit to be revised, you know, the and instead of an or in that particular one, or vice versa, in that particular one for the, for the manufactured home piece. But we also wanted to clean up some of these other items that they have identified already in the, in the review. And so you'll note on the first page of that that it was a twenty-twenty-one, I think, evaluation is what they call that. Looks like it was done on September of twenty-twenty-one, the date of the review, whoever the reviewer was. So they provided us this document, and then I cut and pasted the pieces that we were missing out of there. So a good example would be if you're looking at the number thirteen and fourteen on the list on page eighty-eight, it's the abrogation and greater restriction section. We added, we simply just added a item F on zero-four-zero, which I think was titled intent. So we had ran that through the District Attorney's Office to make sure we didn't need to create a whole new section that just was titled that, that we could just add it to this. It explains the code provision for that, explains it nicely. And so we, it seemed to fit in that, in that section, zero-four-zero. So we added F and G verbatim from what the state's requiring to make sure that we cover all of these required conditions.
Thank you. And bless you, Paul. Any other comments from the commission? Mark?
Yeah, so for Courtney or Tom, I'm looking at packet page seventy-six, and you have Condition C, where there is no base flood elevation data available for Zone A from any other source. Can you explain that to me in terms that I might be able to understand?
Yes, Courtney Walker, for the record, a Zone A floodplain is basically, it's an approximate zone, and so they haven't determined what the base flood elevation is. FEMA says, here's your floodplain area, here's the extent of it, but we can't tell you how deep the floodwaters are. And so you would need to study that particular area in greater detail. This is a nuance that we need to include in the code. However, we've been working over many years to do map revisions where we can identify base flood elevations in those approximate A zones. So there's very few left in the county. There might be one left. So it's more one of those check the box that we included it, but it just means that there's not enough information with that floodplain.
Okay, so if you happen to be in an undetermined floodzone, how do you determine the height of the flood?
So typically, you would get an engineer involved, and they would take, you have your floodplain maps, your flood, flood insurance rate maps, they're called the firm, and that just basically shows you your zone. It's like a map, essentially. There's further detail on how those extents were determined based on a flood, flood insurance study, the FIS, and that's a more detailed book where they have stream profiles and all these things. And so there's certain methods that you could do to extrapolate where they have identified the base flood elevation and the closest location to that with the same water source. And so through some engineering methods, you're able to basically extrapolate that towards the exact section that you're trying to determine it. So it just is a little bit more work for whoever is going to try to do a project in that area, which is why we've tried to remap things so that in almost all areas, the base flood elevation is determined.
So you said an engineer determines this. Tom, do you have any guess of what that would cost?
Well, of course, it just depends on the size of the project, but, you know, thirty to one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand, even more on some of these. It is pretty expensive. I think right now, with the model that we have going through, the Carson Valley HDR is the consultant for the Carson Subconservancy, who has prepared the model. And currently, all of the developments that build in that area that that model touches has to prove that they're not affecting the floodplain on an adjacent parcel. It's called a cumulative effect. And so it's not just the A zones, but it's also our, we have to have these models in order for the improvements to be installed for all the properties that are developed within the floodplain. So you're just starting from scratch on an A zone. You have to start over from, you have to probably fly it, LIDAR, get LIDAR out there, get the, get the data or topo of the property, so you can model the surface in order for the, for the computer models to see what that water surface and where that water's going to run on that surface. So it's pretty extensive. It's a very expensive report. And, and also, Mark, it is also, that was added because of number twenty-two on page eighty-nine of the table. It requires the base flood elevation data for subdivision proposals, other than, other developments greater than fifty lots or five acres. And so that's where that verbiage came from, is it was a requirement in this.
Okay, so what is the, again, in terms I might be able to understand, what, I understand what a fifty-lot development is. What the heck is a five-acre thing?
So our density in Douglas County, it depends on the zone, is up to, you know, ten, twelve, sixteen units per acre. So five acres would, could generate, you know, fifty lots. If you have a four-and-a-half acre project in an A zone, then it wouldn't be required, as long as you had less than fifty lots. Let's say it was proposed to be forty lots on four acres, then that analysis wouldn't be required in this case. If it was over five...
Although it still is.
Although it is still, still required, not for that provision, in the different section. In the different section, it is required, but this one is missing. We didn't have it in code, so we added it in the code, uh, to be consistent with what, what these guys are asking us to provide in our standard code.
Courtney Walker, for the record, just to provide clarification, in that Zone A, they want you to specify the fifty parcels and five acres to make sure it's required there, but we take it a step further, where, um, on page seventy-seven of the packet, it says when the base flood elevation data is not available from any source for the parcel, which is in a Zone A, the base flood elevation data must be determined, essentially. So we have it no matter what A zone. In a lot of other jurisdictions that don't require you to, um, determine what the base flood elevation is, FEMA would say, okay, you have to develop whatever it is in that A zone to one foot above the highest adjacent grade. So they don't, it's not a requirement for you to determine the base flood elevation, but in Douglas County, it's been a requirement for twenty years.
So if somebody had a ten-incure parcel, and they were going to put one house on it, this would not apply?
That section wouldn't. This other section that is twenty-fifty-one-ninety, and then it's, um, Section One-I, it would catch it there, because it says any development, um, in a Zone A would need to go through that process. And this is not in a location where we're proposing any changes today. This is how the existing code has, has looked for a long time.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. I will open this for the public. Please come to the podium. Seeing no one rise, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do want to thank Tom and Courtney for all their hard work on this, and I, uh, move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that they adopt Ordinance twenty-twenty-three-dash-one-six-two-two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Kirk, second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item for possible action, a discussion regarding the proposed Art in Public Places Program Plan that was prepared by Deborah Soule. Brooke Addy presenting.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present today. My name is Brooke Addy. I am the interim director for the Community Services Department, while Scott Morgan is the interim temporary acting assistant county manager. My normal role is the assistant director for the Community Services Department. We are here today to talk about our Public Art Places Program Plan. In December of twenty-twenty, Douglas County adopted its twenty-twenty master plan, which included new language policies and action items related to the integration of public art into the county's overall economic strategy. In December of twenty-twenty-one, the Board of County Commissioners approved an updated Economic Vitality Plan, which included the development of an outdoor arts program, uh, complement, to complement the county's heritage and scenery. In conducting research about other jurisdictions and how they operate their public art plans, it was determined that using the term Art in Public Places Program was more appropriate and aligned with how other jurisdictions operate. Um, the county at that time did some informal solicitations, sent to three consultants to, um, identify who would facilitate this process. Uh, we did receive two submitting responses, and we selected Deborah Soule, uh, based on her knowledge, skills, and abilities and her years of experience to help us, um, establish this plan. The scope of work, um, identified the development of a mission, vision, and goals for the, the program, uh, reviewed existing backgrounds and documents, and I'll let Deborah get into more information on that. Uh, this plan has been taken forward to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They have approved the plan as it sits for, to move it forward to this board, and then eventually the Board of County Commissioners. Working with the Economic Vitality Project Team, um, is Brian Fitzgerald, who is our champion, who has facilitated, uh, this process along the way. And then we have, uh, Deborah Soule, who will now give her presentation on the plan, the Proposed Pilot Program Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Soule here.
Thank you. So the purpose of the Art in Public Places Program Plan is to establish an overall vision and guidance for the county's growing public art collection. It provides clear procedures for a public art program in terms of approvals, acquisition, installation, and funding for public art based on community input and best practice in public art programming. The underlying program rationale and objectives are, first of all, to improve the attractiveness of public spaces by integrating art into the visual landscape, showcasing historic identity and contemporary Douglas County culture, enhancing the local character by introducing valued artworks, stimulating the local economy through increased pedestrian activity that encourages spending and investment in local businesses, serving as an educational tool about local culture, history, and geography, and expanding the boundaries of local artist endeavors. It will also increase community participation through inclusive public art engagement processes, and it will be a vehicle in the creation of distinct places and spaces that will further Douglas County's unique sense of place. The Douglas County Art in Public Places Program was informed by extensive consultation with residents, with businesses, local arts and culture organizations, staff, policymakers, and elected and appointed representatives, in order to ensure that the plan reflects the character and the aspirations of the many communities that comprise Douglas County. So community outreach tools that were used included a survey questionnaire that was widely distributed electronically as well as in hard copy. That's all detailed in Appendix B of the plan. There were five-hundred-and-six surveys completed and submitted in response to the consultation process, and there were also twenty-five one-on-one interviews that were undertaken with key stakeholders that included senior county and town, town staff, G.I.D. managers, board chairs, business organizations, arts and culture organization representatives, Main Street gardeners, mill staff, Parks and Rec, pardon me, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board members, planning commissioners, county commissioners, and Washoe Tribe community spokespersons. Input was also gathered from local business owners and community leaders through a Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce luncheon meeting and a Business Council of Douglas County meeting. So the results of all of that consultation and engagement are summarized in Appendix B of the plan. In the twenty-twenty-one update to the Douglas County Economic Vitality Plan fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-seven, the enhancement of arts and culture is identified as a strategic focus area project. An outdoor art program is to be developed to complement the county's heritage and scenery in order to achieve the following vision: A variety of installations are located throughout the county, and we are becoming an arts destination. The twenty-twenty-seven vision of success for this project includes the completion of, and overall, uh, completion of a public art plan, the installation of multiple artworks in several geographic areas that are indicated as interest areas, that Art in Public Places recognizes and celebrates Douglas County's diverse cultural and rich heritage, the updating of ordinances and special use permits, that Douglas County's cultural community is engaged in the process, that Douglas County will be recognized as a destination for visual and performing arts, that it will build a sense of community as visitors and residents are informed about and have opportunities to be engaged in the arts through a guide that utilizes multimedia forms of communication. The focus areas should also include a comprehensive arts and culture plan. Secondly, the Douglas County Master Plan twenty-twenty update included new policies and action items regarding the integration of public art and culture into the county's economic strategy, specifically Economic Development Implication Action, Item Twenty-four. Douglas County should consider amendments to the Douglas Code to create a process for applying to install public art, including separate criteria for murals and sculptures, as well as consideration for temporary, permanent, and rotating displays. Also, the two-thousand-and-thirteen Douglas County Valley Vision and the two-thousand-and-eighteen Minden and Gardinerville Plan for Prosperity also call for the preparation of public arts and culture plan and program for the towns that address both physical and visual improvements, um, including performing arts space, art studio display areas, and art in public places. Additionally, a public arts plan was prepared by the Main Street Gardinerville and by the Town of Gardinerville with input from the Main Street Gardinerville Design Committee, and that was adopted by the Main Street Governing Board in September two-thousand-and-twenty, by the Carson Valley Art Council in October two-thousand-and-twenty, and by the Town of Gardinerville in November of two-thousand-and-twenty. The primary goal of that plan was to identify a unifying theme for Main Street, the Main Street area, and local heritage was selected as the primary theme, and the improvement and improvement of visual environments was the secondary theme. So the guiding principles, the program is based upon the following guiding principles: First of all, that the program is fiscally responsible. Second of all, that the artwork is based on consultation and engagement, ensuring that it's, that it is relevant to the county and to its residents. Third, that the public art installations are robust and of high quality. And fourth, that all installations will have a clear line of responsibility in terms of ownership, installation, and ongoing maintenance, and safety. Although there are many existing and well-loved artworks throughout Douglas County, and considerable evidence through this project of support for a countywide public art program, the county is new to arts-related programming. It's therefore recommended that the county commence with a pilot public art project. Piloting an Art in Public Places program will provide the opportunity to explore wider community preferences, to test program options using existing resources, and will inform long-term strategies. It's recommended that the pilot program should have a five-year timeframe to enable sufficient, a sufficient range of artworks to be introduced and experienced by residents and by visitors to inform the evaluation of the program in terms of placemaking, community pride and involvement, visitor attraction, business enhancement, and program costs. So upon completion of the pilot phase, the strengths and weaknesses of the program can be evaluated, and fine-tuning and adjustments can be made to ensure long-term success of a public art program in Douglas County. If major revisions or changes to the pilot program are not identified and actions not taken to suspend the pilot project, it will then transition into a regular program. In order to maximize the output and the impacts of a public art program, and to minimize program costs associated with the acquisition of permanent works and with their long-term maintenance, it's recommended that the county commences with an Art in Public Places program that consists of the following three categories. The first category is rotating or temporary public art. The second category is public art on privately-owned commercial property, and the third category is permanent public art in public spaces. So just a little bit of, um, detail on those categories. Category one, the objective of rotating or temporary public art is to establish a continuously-changing selection of temporary artworks in designated locations. Rotating public art is assigned to pre-selected locations for a limited period of time. The artwork can be leased, or it can be borrowed from the artist, or it can even be listed for sale with a commission option, um, by the town or by the county while it's on display. Rotating or temporary public art offers several advantages for Douglas County. First, it's less costly than commissioned or purchased permanent public art. It can be leased for a nominal amount that simply covers the artist's costs for installation, and the artwork can also be for sale. And in some cases, emerging artists may opt to donate the artwork for a fixed period of time just to help them gain recognition in the, in the art world. In addition, a rotating or temporary public art category can be implemented using the county's existing budgetary and staff resources. Because art tastes and preferences differ from one person to the next, rotating artworks also means that a wider spectrum of art can be presented, and that's more likely, that are more likely to appeal to residents and visitors. Rotating public art keeps it fresh. Visitors will want to return to see what's coming next. Rotating public art also provides more opportunities for a larger number of both established and emerging artists to participate in the program and to gain valuable experience. Category two, as in the case, as is, as is the case in many other counties and municipalities, a significant percentage of existing public art is located on privately-owned commercial property. Even if it's cited on privately-owned commercial property, an art project that's visible to the public is still perceived as public art, and it will become an important part of the county's visual landscape. The number of potential locations vastly outnumbers the number of public locations when you're looking for, um, commercial sites. The Douglas County Public Art Program and county ordinances should facilitate and clarify future public art on private commercial property. The advantages of public art on privately-owned commercial property include the fact that the costs of acquiring, installing, and maintaining artworks is the responsibility of the property owner. of the property owner, and that there are many potential locations throughout Douglas County on which public art can be located on private commercial property, which would significantly increase the growth of the public art program in the county. And category three, permanent public art projects that have previously been permitted and that may continue to arise and be called for from local communities or proposed by organizations such as Main Street Gardinerville should continue to be permitted, provided that they're self-funded and allowed under the Douglas County Code. Project inspiration for such projects could also arise from a variety of sources, including inspired residents. There were 31% of all people who were consulted in this project who put up their hand and put down their names and contact details because they actually want to be directly involved in future public art projects, which was an incredibly high percentage. So inspired residents should be involved. Sponsoring organizations or groups, or the GID, town, or county leaders can also be a source of inspiration for projects. Main Street Gardinerville is likely to be involved in future permanent public art projects within the Main Street District. Okay, to ensure that an effective pilot, to ensure an effective pilot phase for Art in Public Places, the plan includes guidelines for each program category. But overall, public art applicants, also known here as PAA, are the individuals or groups that actually propose new temporary or permanent public art projects for all categories of public art. So these public art applicants can include individuals, towns, GID or county leaders, elected representatives, businesses, community organizations, or other sponsors. They can also include the residents who submitted their names in the engagement process that I told you about. A Douglas County-based public art advisory organization should also be established and operate under an MOU with Douglas County. They would take the lead role in advising and assisting in the administration of the Art in Public Places program. This organization could be headed by the Carson Valley Arts Council and could also include representatives from other Douglas County arts and culture organizations, from Main Street Gardinerville, and others with expertise in culture and public art. The public art advisory organization would be responsible for evaluating proposals for new temporary or permanent public art projects in terms of viability, locations, estimated costs, and any technical aspects of the proposed artwork. They could also be responsible for encouraging proposed content that reflects the expressed local community identity and values for the project. They could be responsible for advising on standards in terms of artistic methods and technical requirements for a proposed artwork, and when needed, directing applicants to planning staff to answer zoning or right-of-way questions, and when beneficial, even recommending a pre-application meeting with the planning department. When needed, they could assist in the establishment of a project panel who have the required expertise for each temporary Category One or permanent Category Three public art in public locations. They could also offer advice and assistance for public art applicants preparing, commissioning or purchasing contracts with the artist if that's needed. And they would advise, as required, on any maintenance requirements, which would also be specified in the purchaser or commissioning contract for permanent public art. And they would also help maintain an up-to-date inventory of all public art in Douglas County. It's also recommended that sections of the county code pertaining to public art should be amended to more accurately define public art, differentiating it from signage, and articulating the approval processes that are set out in this plan. Based upon discussions with the planning department, the recommended public art ordinance section of the program plan, that's Section 7, should be considered draft. Community services staff will work with planning staff to refine the recommended amendments pertaining to public art to ensure that they reflect the public art program processes and that they also function well within the updated code. So the action that we're seeking is to adopt the Art in Public Places program plan and the proposed code changes be considered draft. So, as an overview, the process would work as follows: Proposals for Category One, Two, and Three public art are submitted to the public, are submitted by the public art applicant. Then, the public art advisory organization receives new proposals and has the lead role in administering the pilot program. The host community, that town, or GID board, or the county, if it's proposed on county property, or if it's requesting county funding, would then review and consider approvals of the project, including locations, based upon recommendations from the public art advisory organizations and their own acceptance of funding sources. And all projects would have to comply with the county public art ordinances and/or the building codes if applicable. So unless the proposed artwork is to be located on county property, the county's role on all public art properties is to ensure that they comply with the updated county ordinances pertaining to public art, and that the applicants file for a public art permit if required, and also that town and GID boards are the approving body for public art proposed within their jurisdiction following screening of the proposed artwork by the public art advisory organization. The town or the GID board may offer suggestions on locations or funding options for the project. Program funding. The Art in Public Places program requires a modest budget for its implementation, and that could potentially be funded using existing budgets and resources. The public art applicants should also be encouraged to apply for community grant funding under that program to kickstart the pilot program for Category One and Category Three projects. Because the public art program relies on grants, donations, and sponsorships as funding sources, public-private and nonprofit public partnerships should be strongly encouraged to minimize project costs and also to enhance project opportunities. That's my overview of the Art in Public Places program plan. I welcome any questions.
That was very detailed. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
So, Madam Chair, before we take questions from the planning commission, introducing myself, I'm Brian Fitzgerald. I'm the champion for this project through the county's Economic Vitality Department. I also serve as currently the president of the Carson Valley Arts Council. And just a brief comment or two before questions are taken. So, the purpose of this program, as Deborah, well, first of all, I want to congratulate Deborah for putting together such a great program. There's a lot of months of work put into this, a lot of information that has been compiled to provide you with this proposal today. We're very excited about this plan. From my perspective with the Arts Council, this is a long time coming. Some of you may remember my name and face as the county was preparing the update to the Douglas County Master Plan. And during that process, we added some new language that addressed, addressing the arts and cultural needs of our community. So this is one step of that process, but it's an exciting step and, I think, a necessary first step, because there is a bigger picture. And as Deborah alluded to, there's a lot of potential if we implement this plan of making Carson Valley an arts destination. And in my world of arts and culture, you talk about cultural tourism, and what does it take to help revitalize a downtown area? And a lot of that has to do with arts and culture and filling some of those vacant business locations where you can have more galleries and just more opportunities for people to come and enjoy our character here in Carson Valley through the arts. So we're very excited about the program. I think there's more to come. You're going to probably be seeing my face a little bit more as we move forward with other arts and cultural initiatives, whether it be arts and cultural facilities with the county readdressing its master, or I'm sorry, strategic plan. I hope to be involved in that process as well. So this is, this is a piece of the pie. It's a big, it's a big step. We're excited to bring it forward and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a question. I just want to commend all of you. This is a lot of information, and it's quite extensive, and there's a lot of community leaders and stakeholders that were present in the process, and so I just wanted to commend you for a robust program and plan, and I just, I wish the program all the success in the world because I think it's desperately needed, so, well done.
Questions? Paul.
I echo Bryce's comments. This is a, after reading through all of the materials and listening to your presentation, Ms. Sewell, I am impressed by the noble purpose, Mr. Fitzgerald, that you outlined, and the genuine potential for reaching folks in our county in a way that will help them identify proudly with where they live. It is, it's remarkable, and it's something to be commended. Now let me tell you a little bit about where we are culturally in the state of Nevada, just from my observations. We have some very divisive issues that have been repeated in the news and otherwise that I really want to protect what your efforts are doing. I did read in the commentary a couple of folks that said, please, no political kind of art. I would go further and say, perhaps add as a general principle, or even include in the county ordinances, subject to the First Amendment, although I think this would be a rational way to modify speech in a way that protects what the guiding principles are and not offend any First Amendment rights, that there be no advocacy, promotion, recruitment, or advertising of any political party or political position. And if that is one of the guidelines, I think it would go very far in helping keep pure what you're trying to do and eliminate folks painting on the pavement, calling it art, putting up various symbols that might not be universally accepted, received, or would give a different spin on what I think you're trying to do, which I commend.
Other questions? No? Mark.
Yes. So, you have the public arts advisory organization. Who picks who those people are? Do the county commissioners pick them?
I don't think that was actually determined in detail, but the recommendation is that the Carson Valley Arts Council take the lead role in this, and I think that they would be able to discern other individuals in the community, perhaps other cultural organizations or heritage organizations that could contribute and have some knowledge and participate in that organization. So I would leave it up to the Carson Valley Arts Council.
Okay. My next question is, on page 123 of your report, you said, basically, we're going to do a five-year program, and it's automatically going to renew if nobody objects. I personally don't think anything should automatically renew. I think the commissioners should get to say, was this successful or was it not successful? And on page 129, you talk about taking a half of 1% of the capital improvements money to fund this program. Is that all you want? Or do you want a modest budget in addition to that? And how much money is a half of 1%?
Deborah Sewell here. First of all, those are long-term possible directions. They're not meant to be written in stone at this particular point in time, but based on my experience, half of 1% for a public art program for a county of this size is probably a reasonable estimate. But that is, as I was mentioning, just a very future recommendation, not something that is intended to be instated in the pilot project.
Okay. So for the pilot project, you're just going to ask the commissioners to lend you some staff to get up and running?
I think it would be up to the Community Services Department, who are working with me on this project, to determine from their existing staff and existing resources what they could do.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott, you want to address that?
Scott Morgan, Act Dean, Assistant County Manager, Community Services Director. I was hoping to just go back and sit down, but yeah, I can address that. The modest budget would be to implement this program as to, ultimately, it's the County Board of Commissioners determination, but to house it temporarily or permanently, but during the pilot program in the Community Services Department. And through the budget process, the modest portion is to allocate some of our staffing resources to get this program launched. Also, we would be looking at formulating an MOU, very similar to the MOU that you saw with the Friends of the Dangberg Home Ranch, with the Arts Council, to administer this program. The real work happens there, that screening committee that you were discussing, we plan to utilize a nonprofit with expertise in this to minimize the impact and the footprint that Douglas County government has as a role in this program. We would like a very minimal oversight role. Part of the funding program is, we would also then, with the board approval, put in some resources to launch within some of our public parks after suitable public review, some of the pads for temporary art, just to help as part of the launch of the program in appropriate places. And so we're talking about a modest budget. That is, that is what that means.
Other questions? Thank you, Scott. Ken.
I just want to commend the survey that you did was very extensive, and it was a great turnout with all the comments and all that. And I still, I had a question about the cowboy on the water tank at the fairgrounds when that was going to be repainted.
Deborah Sewell here. I personally can't answer that question. I'll turn it over to Scott.
Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, Intrum. Delighted to report that has been repainted. There's, actually, it was in one of the slides, the tank. So, the repaint of that was restored back when the Town of Gardinerville had their mural done. We went and grabbed that artist and said, please, patch up our mural on the water tank. So she put a nice polish on it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing nothing? Thank you. I'll open this for the public hearing. If anyone would like to rise. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Are there other questions for staff? Any comments? I have one. I'm boastful. My comment for the art survey made it to the top of page 164 of our packet. And so I pat myself on the back for that one. And I think we can have a motion. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brooke. Thank you, Deborah and Scott. Well done. Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, too, would like to thank Deborah and Brooke and Brian and Scott. Outstanding presentation, outstanding work, and you're a credit to the Douglas County community. So I echo my colleague's, Mark's, comments and everyone else's, and I would like to move that the planning commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve and accept the Art in Public Places program plan. and accept the Art in Public Places program plan.
We are recommending that the Board of County Commissioners accept it. So did you?
Approve and accept the Art in Public Places program plan.
But did you say?
Approve and accept.
Did you say to recommend to the board?
Yes.
The Board of County Commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Did I miss that part?
Second, so moved.
Ding dong. Off moment. Caught in the moment. So we have a motion by Kirk and a second by Bryce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I had my hand up through the process. I had my hand up.
Yes.
Because I wanted to ask if the moving member of our commission would accept a an amendment to his motion in the seconder. When I had my hand up, I was going to second and make the amendment motion. And that was to include either guiding principles or at least a positive statement that with regard to the public art, that there be note advocacy, promotion, recruitment, or advertising of any political party or political position.
Madam Chair, I think Paul explained this in being sensitive to First Amendment rights, but I would accept his language as a friendly amendment.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, accepting the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are here at the end of our meeting. I will now ask for closing public comment. Seeing no one, rise. I will close public comment. And I have a couple of closing comments myself. I want to thank Bryce for bringing forward some language on Title II, which prohibits planning commissioners from holding appointments to boards and commissions other than the planning commission, and say that the Board of Commissioners had a first reading to amend that language and remove it from Title II, that and planning commissioners can now, hopefully, after the second reading, hold appointments other than the planning commission on state boards. And we'll know after the second reading, but I believe that's going to pass. It will still, I believe, prohibit planning commissioners from holding elected office, such as town boards or GIDs, or other appointed boards in the county that conflict with planning commission, so that we don't have conflicts of interest on the planning commission. But thank you, Bryce, for bringing that forward. And also, I want to note the passing of David Pritchett. You don't know him, but he was the Planning and NEPA Program Team Leader for the Bureau of Land Management since 2013, and he worked very closely with the state lands, Nevada state lands, and he he was a very, very good man. He and I danced a few times with the State Land Use Advisory Planning Board, and he always kept a sense of humor, and I want to note his passing. So thank you again, all of you, for a good meeting, and we will have a September meeting. This meeting is adjourned at 3:30.